Good evening, I want to give you an update, we're just waiting for another council member to arrive. So we have a quorum, so that way we can continue with the meeting. We had two council members, one had an unexpected death in the family and another one is on vacation, so. If we can't get to three, then we aren't going to have a quorum and we will have to meet again next month. Other, she's not coming. According to Dan. Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Good evening, everyone, Councilman Jindal.
Present.
Count, council, oh, excuse me, Mayor Portem Daily.
Here.
Mayor Duper.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much, we did not have a closed session or workshop this evening. We'll move on to one D, which is our invocation and pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Jindal.
We will start with the pledge of allegiance. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, go again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please bow your head. Thank you God and the great powers beyond our comprehension for bringing us here together to serve our great city. There are many challenges that face us throughout this spectrum. And it is just as wide as the spectrum of solutions and individuals wanting their best to take the right course of action. I pray and I ask that we have the courage and fortitude to assemble as equals to make the choices that bring the most benefit and utility to our community. Amen.
Thank you, sir, Mr. City Manager, are there any items to be added or deleted?
Yes, sir, I would like to remove the item two B.
Okay. We will deal with that removal at another date. Moving on to one F, this is a chance for anyone in the public who wishes to speak on a non-agendized item to come forward. I have two requests so far and we'll start with Mr. Rich Smith.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Rich Smith, I'm a business agent with Teamsters Local nineteen thirty-two. In nineteen seventy-two, my parents left a really small, snowbound town in Ely, Nevada and moved here to Loma Linda. From nineteen seventy-two to nineteen eighty-eight, I grew up on these streets. I lived here, went to school at Mission Elementary and remember when Alphabeta was right across the street. So, Loma Linda was always my home before I moved to Redlands. Now, I represent the members of the city that have joined the organization and I'm proud. So with that, the Teams organization is, and our new Loma Linda membership, is looking forward to a productive conversation when it comes to upcoming labor negotiations. Now, speaking of labor negotiations, I just want to talk about two words, dignity and respect. Now, when you separately, those words carry a lot of weight. Dignity, you know, the state of being worthy of honor, you know, is beneath one's dignity. And then, respect, well, we all know what respect means. And whether we like to believe it or not, everyone desires respect. When it comes down to it, there are some that will say, well, I don't really care. And in fact, they do. And when we're seeking that respect, it comes in many forms. We are always seeking the respect of our coworkers, from those in our chosen craft, from yourselves, from your constituents, from our parents. And when it comes down to it, yes, our employer. When you bring those two words together, dignity and respect, you lay down the very foundation of what it means to be a collective bargaining agreement. And with that, I just want to say, thank you and we appreciate and looking forward to those negotiations.
Thank you, sir, I hope you will be able to attend our budget workshop tomorrow.
Looking forward to it.
Great, well, happy to see you there tomorrow, thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Beatrice Garcia?
Good evening, council members, mayor, staff, thank you for giving us the time or allowing me the time to come up here. I moved back to Loma Linda, I grew up in Loma Linda, I moved back into Loma Linda two years ago. As we are aware, Loma Linda has been named a blue zone for quite some time. Recently, a new docu-series came out in twenty twenty-three, September to be exact. You know, not only revealing the secrets of what a wonderful city this is, but also how our senior citizens, you know, make part of that city. They've created that, where we live, where I live, University Mobile Home Estates, there is a lot of those seniors there. Recently, on the twenty-ninth of February, one of my neighbor's house was broken into. My house has been broken into twice. The purpose of me being here today is to request and ask for the city to step it up a little bit with the safety. Last night, actually, just last night, again, five assailants broke into some of the train containers. Luckily, I ended up with a very good dispatcher. I was on the phone with her till five AM and it started at one forty-five in the morning and until five AM. They caught three assailants and they caught everything and including the getaway vehicle that they were gonna put everything in the car. They took the vehicle, they caught all the merchandise. At the beginning, they were not even gonna go back for the merchandise and I told the dispatcher, if they don't come back and get it, they're gonna come back in the morning. This has been an ongoing thing for the last two years that I've been living at this area. I just had a recent meeting with my property management company and I went in there negotiating safety, which should not be something that I'm doing, but that's what I'm doing. I'm negotiating on my community's safety with management and they're owned by Loma Linda, so that's another thing that I'm working on right now. But I shouldn't have to negotiate safety with our law enforcement, I support law enforcement to the fullest. I give monthly dues to law enforcement and not on top of that, but, you know, their slogan is, see something, say something. I'm seeing it, I'm saying it, there, the time that is, sometimes the response time is, can be like two, three hours. So, I'm a single mom with an autistic child, I should not have to be negotiating my safety or my neighbor's safety for that matter. So, again, I'm just here to ask if the city can help us, talk to the police department to help us step up security and safety in our area.
Thank you, I'll invite you also to our, to our budget workshop tomorrow.
Okay.
The reality is, is it's getting harder and harder to pay the bills. And we're not sure where our budget's gonna be next year, because we just don't have the revenue that's coming in. And so, it's, it's harder and harder to think about how we're gonna pay for public safety, police and fire. And so, we're gonna have to start thinking outside the box. And so, that's why we want the public's input, we want everybody to come and contribute as much as they can. And if anybody has ideas, you know, other, other communities have done different things. But the reality is, we, we just, we're not sure what the future's gonna look like.
Thank you.
So, I would encourage you to please stay involved.
I will.
Keep putting pressure on us as a council and as a city. And we, you know, we, we have really good service, we believe we, we have the best that, that's out there, but we can only pay for what we can afford at this point.
Correct, thank you, sir.
So, we're looking for more ideas, so if you have any thoughts, please bring them forward.
And on that note, I want, do want to include, I've talked to my management company about starting a community outreach with our residents, you know. They've prolonged it, regardless, again, that's a whole nother monster that I'm dealing with, with Loma Linda, in order to push that, to maybe move it faster. But I do thank you guys for at least listening and definitely I'll be there tomorrow.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Okay, that was the last of our speakers for non-agendized.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, you did?
No, I'm sorry, I was just going to say, we actually have four that submitted.
So, I, one of the things we're previewing tonight, I guess, is a new automated system. We, we had a, all of this technology changed a few months ago and so, we're kind of getting used to it, but I guess we have a new request slip system tonight too, so. We asked the clerk to lead us on this.
So, we have Laura Baumann.
Okay. Hello.
I just got off work next door at the library and just rushed on over. So, as my awesome neighbor was saying, I was robbed on the twenty-ninth, the other day, on the other day, I came home from my lunch break. Am I speaking too loud? So, sorry. Been telling that all my life, okay. But I, I was working at the library on, on Thursday, the twenty-ninth. I came home on my lunch break and my door was unlocked, I was thirty, under thirty minutes from walking into a worse situation. It was broad daylight, they touched my dog's ashes, they, because of the, the box was open, they ripped my underwear, they stole a lifetime of purple things that I cannot get back. As a single woman, it's very, I did not know about any robberies that were happening in my park, because my management's not letting us know, they let us know when, oh, there's issue or that issue. But nothing about the robbery, so I'm negotiating, trying to figure out, again, negotiating our safety. I've heard from several neighbors, they've been robbed and the park always says, we're gonna do something later, we're gonna put the stuff in soon, and then it just falls off. I, I, I'm sleeping with a knife right now, I'm thinking about a gun, but I don't want to be that person. They're watching us across the apartments, across the way from us, they pointed them out and you could see where they are, they're transients. But I've helped, those people in the apartments are nice people, I've helped, they've helped me, I've helped them over the years. I just, it's not them, but they're transients over there and it's worsening where the train area is.
If you can slow down your presentation, then I can probably understand it.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Daily. But yeah, I feel, like I said, the police patrol's helping, I feel more safer, but I'm still feeling very unsafe. I know the University Mobile Estates is owned by the Loma Linda Hospital, because I found the paperwork, I've been there for years, one was taken over. And I'm trying to figure out how to contact them, because I contacted the office for things and I'm not getting heard back. The office was called about them being in the park, breaking into my house at twelve forty-one by Betty. And I walked in at one fifteen, could have been very much worse.
I thought you guys have a security guard.
We now do, after the barn door has been already shut.
I thought there was one there.
No, they had, they did away with security, because like, a while ago, but now we got security again, but it's, I had no idea about these robberies, now I'm having to figure out if I. I hate the term, the victim compensation fund, but I have expenses coming out, as you're aware, from all this and I'm like, I hate the term victim. I prefer awesomeness, but I will be trying to apply for those to help some of the office set the expenses. But that, as Betty says, the contact is what it is, I had neighbors helping me put a stick in my sliding glass door that was broken and not the office, they came the next day and helped me with that. Because I stole my purple key fob for my car, so I had to go do that immediately. Also, unrelated to safety, the trash issue, the trash pickup for mobile homes should really be exempt, because it's becoming an undue crazy burden. And it's like, our rent's going up because of the trash increase, the apartments don't have to have trash pickup, but we do for the individual trash. But again, I can replace all the thing, I can't replace everything that was stolen, because you just can't. But at least I have, they took my mom's watches, they touched my dog's ashes, they went through my underwear drawer. I, I was thirty minutes away from not serving my commu, no longer serving my community, helping literacy needs, but being murdered possibly by transients. Thank you very much.
Thank you for sharing, I'm sorry if that happened.
We have Kelvin Tam Puh Bolin, sorry if I mispronounce.
That's perfect, thank you, good evening, city members of the City Council and fellow residents and Mayor Phil. I, my name is Kelvin and together with my staff, we're the park, the Mobile Home Park Management, that was entrusted starting in September. We have looked at, specifically at University Mobile and Home Estates, where you have pages, at the last page is where lies our biggest problem, is to stop. People coming over, jumping over, so on that side.
What kind of people, are you referring to transients also?
Yes, yes, so, if you see, look at the last page of, the fifth page, to kind of give you context of where it's coming from. On that side, property line side, we have fences, half of it is wall and half of it is chain links. Neither of them will be able to stop what's going to happen, which is trash bins being placed right next to our property, our fence, for the apartment side. So, there are trash dumpster, about seven of them, for each individual ones, on that Stewart Street, towards the railway. So, those are the ones that they are using to jump over the fence.
Are you, are you saying they're coming from the railroad tracks?
And on the, from the apartment sides, Betty, who came, yeah, the first one.
The apartments are actually in, in the city of San Bernardino, believe it or not, that's the, that's the city boundary right there, the apartments are in the.
And I believe you're gonna invite me to the budget tomorrow, but we did spend eleven thousand dollars to clean up outside of the properties. And we're about to spend tomorrow thirty-one thousand dollars to fix the fence and try to long that side. I know balancing the budget is also my priority, but safety is on top of it. So, Loma Linda is willing to do that, but we need some help from the other side, because whatever we do on this side, those trash dumpsters not gonna disappear overnight. We've tried to reach out, we kind of have exhausted our effort to reach out to the owners of the apartments, to take care of that side.
So, well, without, we, these are non-agendized items, so we can't get too much into talking about this, but I would connect you with somebody at City Hall. Again, I think what the challenge is, like I was saying, is that those apartments are actually in the city of San Bernardino. So, they have a different trash collector, they have a whole different company that manages that than we do. So, there may be, we need to do some conversation back and forth, maybe the city manager can assign somebody to help you out with that.
Thank you, more than willing to coordinate and help.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, and, and, again, a nod to our, to our law enforcement here, we, in the last several years, we've added deputy positions to our contract. And the, the reality is, it's just busier and busier and busier and I know from my own experience and listening to how things go, this is a, this isn't the quiet little town that we used to have, is that correct, Lieutenant Smith?
Yes, that's absolutely correct and with the laws, as the mayor knows, with the laws that changed in our state, unfortunately, we can arrest the people that burglarize your house, but they're gonna be out. So, it's very frustrating for you, it's also frustrating for us, because we do the workup on these cases and I mean, we, trust me, we, we love solving these burglaries and getting people's property back. I personally really love seeing people get their jewelry and other items back. So, we're very, we always put out press releases whenever we do, do that, so you know that we're working on it, but our deputies are completely overwhelmed at times, you know. And, and so, if you are waiting a long time, it's because they're on a priority call or a traffic accident, you know, the calls are all priority. You know, the, the calls are all prioritized, so, thank you.
I can't see who's next, so I'm referring to you.
So Laura Baumann and Betty Garcia had a double, and, um, it went duplicate, okay.
I think that's, you just had the representatives here in front of you. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not sure. Okay. All right, who do we have next?
We have another speaker, Kevin Burn, Bernard, I miss, I'm not pronouncing it correctly. He did request for, um, additional time than the three minutes, because he's using an interpreter.
Yes, that's fine.
This is Kevin speaking. Hello, everyone. Hello, Mayor and staff, good evening. I am obviously a deaf person using a sign language interpreter. I also have multiple disabilities. I just wanna add that fact that I have multiple disabilities, I want to disclose that and be open here tonight. One of the disabilities I have is PTSD, and what triggers the PTSD for me is law enforcement officers. Because of my disability, being deaf, and being neurodivergent, I'm also autistic. I'm an adult with autism. I also have ADHD. So what happens is when someone suspects that I'm looking at them weird, and they have the Karen phenomenon, somewhere out in public, or even in private, it doesn't matter. What happens is, someone will feel uncomfortable with my presence. As a person with disability, I also have equal rights, and I should have equal access and be provided accommodations. But unfortunately, the first thing those people do is call law enforcement. And law enforcement are not social workers, law enforcement are not people that are peaceful mediators of, of situations. Law enforcement are armed with guns and ready to use violence for any reason, and for any excuse, based on the type of call they get. And in that sense, I'm not being provided with an accommodation. I need an accommodation when dealing with law enforcement. Unfortunately, law enforcement only hears one side of, of a story, and they don't often provide interpreters like I have here tonight. And what happens often is I will have violence asserted against me, and I will be traumatized. So I am here to advocate for law enforcement to first, reduce the response to Karen phenomena phone calls. For example, people that are calling for any reason, saying, I'm not comfortable with this person, and then having the police respond to that. And the interpreter's unable to see the comments. So my question is, I don't understand why community members don't feel safe versus seeing something that actually happens, like somebody being assaulted. I'd like to warn and caution everyone that law enforcement must be trained on interventions and not on asserting violence. Violence only perpetuates more violence, and that's all it can do. So law enforcement, I know sitting here on this side, must be trained on peaceful interventions without using a military, uh, perspective or using guns. And I wanna emphasize that, because these are the traumas that I deal with. And there are a lot of people that we deal with that are homeless, or others that are also traumatized. And where do they get some type of prevention from being re-traumatized? So that way, they don't perform the illegal acts that will require the participation of law enforcement to stem them. So I wanna advocate for that, and I wanna reinforce that. Unfortunately, the system and our society is oppressive, and we are very lucky to be in a unique blue zone, because we do have the support of the community, and we do have community involvement, and we have many community members here that care about each and every one of us. This is one of the reasons why I'm a student at Loma Linda University. It is the only blue zone institution in an area that's a blue zone, and so we wanna reinforce peaceful interventions, not violent interventions from the police. Violence is not the answer. Prevention of violence is the answer. Police are not the answer. Police are violent.
Okay, we're gonna have to wrap up.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want everyone to understand that there is another side. And I've been thrown out economically, and I've been abused by society who didn't think once about how to help to accommodate my various disabilities and my traumas, and my survival. So my question is, how can I survive? First, do you provide survival tools? And that's why, again, I'm a student at the Loma Linda University. It is one of the best systems in place for surviving and thriving. Law enforcement needs to be involved with Loma Linda.
I think we're done, thank you.
Thank you so much, and we'll work on advocacy.
Thank you. You're very blessed to be able to go to school at Loma Linda University, so I'm glad for that. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Those are all the speakers we have.
Okay. All right, we are going to move on to our scheduled items. The first is a proclamation for Arbor Day. And I'm very proud to, uh, to share with all of you that we are now, um, a member of Tree City USA, thanks to Councilmember Jindal, who has really been the driving force, uh, really helped getting us to a lot of these places, so, um, thank you, sir. And, uh, and I hear a clap, yeah, we can clap. So, uh, this is a proclamation for Arbor Day. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas, this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and is observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas, trees can be the solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil, uh, by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And, whereas, trees are renewable resources, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other products, while increasing property values, enhancing the economic vitality of business areas, and beautifying our community. And whereas, in California, Arbor Day is recognized on March seven, birthday of horticulturalist Luther Burbank, known for the hundreds of plant and fruit strains he created, which include the Shasta Daisy, the Fire Poppy, the Santa Rosa Plum, and the White Blackberry. And whereas, Loma Linda is committed to growing and maintaining our urban forest, beautifying our community and improving aesthetics for a healthy environment. Now, therefore, the city council, uh, does hereby recognize Arbor Day, and we urge all citizens to join together and celebrate the benefits of, of the community, our trees, and recognize the work accomplished to plant and maintain them, also to promote, promote a well-being of this and future generations. So that is our Arbor Day proclamation. We didn't have any representatives or anybody to accept that, okay. All right, item two B was, uh, will be continued, and that was recognition for, um, a program that we've been doing at our elementary school, one of our elementary schools. And, um, eagerly waiting that one, cuz we've, we've had a couple of scheduling mishaps, but we'll get to that next council meeting. And we'll move on to item two C, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, this item is the, uh, have to do with the water and sewer rate study. Uh, the city hired a consultant to help us prepare the water and sewer rate study every five years. And on January twenty-ninth, the consultant came to the city and presented report to all of us. And it wish we going to, uh, propose an increase for the water rate of four percent for the next five year, and do not incre- increase any sewer rate at all. So the city mailed out four hundred, four thousand nine hundred and eleven notices to all the resident and, and, uh, water consumer within the city. And I wish we only received three written protests, uh, since last Thursday, right?
Uh, we received one more protest.
Okay, so total of four. So, for the, for the protest, for not increase the rate. So, the, tonight is a public hearing for this item, and the city staff recommend that we appeal the ordinance number seven five four, and introduce a new council bill number zero dash twenty twenty-four dash zero three. And in, and to set the first reading, and establish the maximum water utility service rate effective January, I mean, effective June first of twenty twenty-three, through January first of twenty twenty-nine. As in my report, oh, and set the second meeting for April tonight. That's in my report, so now you can open the public hearing.
Uh, any, any questions here on the dais before we open it? Uh, y- you mentioned not increasing any wastewater rates, but we can't control what San Bernardino does, correct?
Correct, this is only the city portion.
Right, so we have to be careful when we say that.
Yes, I'm sorry, you are, you are correct.
Because the city of San Bernardino routinely raises rates on us, and we have no control over that.
Correct, our sewer, this portion of our sewer to take care of that portion from the house to the pipe, the sewer pipe, through the, uh, the city boundary. Our sewer is, is being treated at a sewer, at a city San Bernardino sewer treatment plant.
And we basically have a pass-through for the rates on that.
Correct.
Move it. Hold on, I do have to open, I have to do open the public hearing, but question first.
I mean, I'm gonna make a statement first and then ask a question, two questions. Um, first statement, got this from one of our constituents, I'm just gonna read what they sent me. Please reconsider the water rate increase for all of us retirees in Loma Linda. The increase does not look like much, but with inflation, increased utility bills, higher food costs, taxes, and medical expenses, it makes, making payments difficult. Everything is going up, but my income, like many others, is fixed. If we are unable to water our plants and trees, it will have a negative effect on the environment. Now to the question, can you briefly explain why we have, um, not annual, but a frequent increase in rates?
Every three months, I'd be happy to get, uh, our consultant here to, to answer this question. Mr. Clayton Tuckfield.
Hi, good evening. Um, I'll do my best, the, over time, things continue to increase. For example, uh, the labor, uh, that goes into the water system, they always wanna, uh, uh, increase in their salaries, like cost of living increase. Um, the benefits that the city provides to the, uh, people, those continue to increase. And the city continues to have to make capital improvements, uh, to keep the water system in a reliable and efficient manner. So those good costs continue to increase over time, and, um, this is what drives the increases going forward. We're talking four percent, roughly reflecting, uh, inflation that's occurred in the last several years, um, which we expect to continue going forward.
And especially Edison bill, uh, we have to use a power from Edison to pump up the water from the wells and, and pump it to the reservoir, so the electricity bill has been increased quite a bit. And yes, I am concerned, because I do live here in town, I have an aunt that live here in town with, uh, she's retired and have limited income, so I push him pretty hard to keep it low, and, and that's why we only increase the water. Uh, we can, we can continue to, to, uh, work on what we have in our rate for our sewer, so we're doing pretty good in sewer, so, we're not too bad at all, so.
So one thing I keep hearing is it's rained more than ever the past two years. That has, despite that, we have an increase in bills. And what I'm hearing is, the reason for that is an increase in labor, and then an increase in electricity prices, right?
Yes.
Is that a fair statement?
And benefits.
Which is part of labor.
Labor, salary, and benefits, yeah.
Cool. Okay, um, last question, do any other cities have any, uh, incentives to reduce water bills, so whether that's, um, their lawns, transitioning lawns, or do any of the neighboring cities have any incentives like that?
Not at all.
I'm not aware of that, no. If you're talking about incentive to re, to conserve water, is that what you're asking?
To conserve water, to help with the conservation of water?
Speaking that, we have, that's why we have tiered system, do you wanna explain the tiered system?
Yeah, so, so, like, a few years ago, there was a court case, San Juan Capistrano, that, that basically provided a means to develop a tiered rate structure uh, in a manner that's consistent with state law. So, uh, those individuals in a lower tier pays less for the water supply versus those who use a lot of water pay more, uh, based on the cost of getting additional water supply. So there is that incentive provided in the rate structure, which city of Loma Linda does have.
So let me give an example, so if I wanna replace my yard, which is grass, and I wanna use something that conserves water, rocks, maybe Californian native plants, does any neighboring city around us have something that would, um, provide a subsidy or some kind of incentive to lower the cost for me to do that?
I think Los Angeles does, actually, that provides, if you take your lawn out, they give you some money to produce that type of landscape, if that's what you're asking, yeah.
And activities like those would come out of the city budget?
Yes.
Right?
Well, we have a separate water fund, but.
Right.
Do we, is our water fund self-sustainable, or self-sustained, or is it, do we contribute anything from the general fund?
No, we don't, do not.
The land maintenance district, that's not including water, right? The question about.
The landscape maintenance district, we have to pay into purchase the water to eligate those trees.
Okay, so the answer to his question would be, some of it does come out of the general fund, cuz don't we take a hundred and eighty thousand every year?
Right, but that's, just to maintain it, really that is a cost for hiring a contractor to maintain those landscaping.
But did you also say that, uh, some of it comes, um, we have to use some of that money to water?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'm gonna open the public hearing, anyone who wishes to speak on this item, please, uh, submit a request to the clerk. Okay, seen nobody, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion from the council. I move the proposal.
Second.
I have a first, uh, by Dr. Daley, and a second by Mr. Jindal. Um, be- before we take the vote, I, this is one of those really uncomfortable things that any city council member, anybody has to do, um, in trying to figure out how we keep the city running, and we keep it looking good, and we maintain our blue zone status and all those things. And, and unfortunately, it, uh, it's not, it's not the, not the best part of our job here. So, Madam Clerk.
Motion is to introduce, introduce on first reading, Council Bill O dash twenty twenty-four zero three. Sorry. Um, I'm sorry, introduce the, the council bill O dash twenty twenty-four zero three on first reading, establishing maximum water utility service rates and charges effective June first, twenty twenty-four, through January first, twenty twenty-nine, and set the second reading for April ninth, twenty twenty-four. Please vote.
I think it's on the screen now.
Oh, okay.
Motion carried, thank you.
Okay, and this will be brought back next month on April ninth, correct?
Yes.
All right, we have the consent calendar. Unless any items are to be pulled, usually a motion will move that altogether.
I just have a question on three I.
Okay. Dr. Daley, do you have any questions on anything? Okay, uh, three I, let's just take that, if we can, right now, Mr. City Manager.
Is it three F?
Three I.
The electrical wiring.
So the question here is, how much, because I didn't see the bids on here, um, how much difference was the bid between what we were looking for and what they were asking?
Yes, I was looking for, this is to, to rewire the house, uh, at the Heritage Park. We were looking about, we were estimating between seventy, eighty thousand dollars. The lowest bid came in at four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars.
Four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars?
Yes, and the second lowest bidder is five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. It, 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 it just way out of, yeah, so, so, that's why I reject all the bid.
And, uh, the reason we do that is because we house, we actually have housed businesses right there, and then we rent.
Well, no, right now, it's, 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 it's an empty house.
But who was there before, inland temporary homes?
It was before it relocated, inland temporary home was there, correct, so, yes. That's why I reject the bid, we can't afford it, so.
I'll move it.
Okay, uh, motion to move the consent calendar?
Say.
And a second?
Motion is to approve the consent calendar as submitted, please vote. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, moving on to old business, uh, four A, which is Council Bill O two zero two four dash zero one, and this is, uh, adopting an ordinance amending our housing development.
There's nothing new to report, right?
Maybe a recap, since we have the folks in the audience.
Okay, it was the, hi, Mr. Mayor, council members, my name's Lorena, Community Development Director with the City of Loma Linda, um, the ordinance went before you last month, it was regarding a streamlining housing initiative, basically if a developer comes before us proposing twenty percent affordability within their design, we would streamline it through as long as they comply with our objective design standards, which is a whole nother ordinance that has certain requirements and certain development, um, for the proposed design, so I believe last month it was approved and this would be the second reading going before you guys.
And this is to potentially rectify and get our housing element approved by the state, correct?
Absolutely, I forgot that I missed that, so this is the last step to certify our housing element and the state did email me today asking for it and I told them that hopefully that we will have it tonight and I will hopefully provide it to him tomorrow.
And, uh, for background for everybody in the audience, what, what did we figure? There's only a, maybe a quarter of the cities have been able to get their housing elements approved by the state and we will definitely be in the top tier if we're able to get this done.
I believe so, I think the number has jumped now and it's a little higher, but yes.
All right, uh, any questions? Okay, let's take a motion on this, cause we did the public hearing last time.
Move it.
A first and a second, Madam Clerk.
Motion is to waive the reading of the ordinance in its entirety and read by title only and adopt Council Bill O dash twenty twenty four zero one, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda approving Development Code Amendment number P twenty three dash two two two, which amends Title seventeen zoning of the Loma Linda Municipal Code by adding chapter one hundred and twenty pertaining to streamline housing development projects on housing element sites, to identify applicable sites, establish requirements and standards for lower income target units and establish procedures and requirements for the ministerial review and approval of the housing development project with lower income target units. I will take your vote, please. Motion carried, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to new business, uh, five A, this is a discussion on the potential closure of the pedestrian bridge at the south end of Ragsdale, uh, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so a little background, a little history is about twenty, twenty years ago, uh, this, the city worked with the county flood control district and US Arm, Army Corps of Engineer when they do the improvement to the San Timoteo Channel, which include removal of the Bailey Bridge at the, at the end of Beaumont Avenue, crossing San Antonio River, and we asked them to relocate one to, at the end of Ragsdale and another one at the end of Ohio Street. So it was, and then the city was responsible for installing that, that, that bridge, well, both bridges, so, uh, a couple of weeks ago, I think a couple of months ago, the mayor re, received a request from the Ragsdale Homeowner Association requesting the, the bridge to be closed for the pedestrian, that pedestrian bridge, so I brought the item to the city council at the last city council meeting and the city council gave me a direction to post a sign at the bridge to let the people that use the bridge know that, uh, the city council or, will, will have a discussion about leaving the bridge open or close that bridge, so that's, that's, and we have a lot of people respond to the, via an email to me and I, I include that in, in our staff report and, um, and we also received additional, is it two more? Two more, uh, yesterday, so I included with, with, with this meeting, so that's in my report.
All right, thank you. Um, I know we have several speakers that wanna speak about this, um, I will state for the record, uh, the other bridge was closed back in twenty fifteen at the request of the homeowners association at that time, uh, and based on their assertion that there was crime and other things that were, uh, surrounding that, and so I believe that, that homeowners association has submitted a letter supporting that the second bridge be closed also, correct?
It, it different homeowner association, but.
Uh, but the first one, uh, submitted a letter supporting, the second one is both communities are tied together.
Correct, okay.
All right, so we'll take, uh, the first of the public speakers unless, uh, there's any questions from the dais here. All right, uh, Eugene Liu?
Hi, thank you very much, uh, Mayor and the, the council for hearing me, um, so I'm Eugene Liu, I'm, uh, one of the residents in the Mission Creek neighborhood, um, which is very close to the bridge, um, so my family uses this bridge, uh, quite often, um, to go to work, I work at Loma Linda University, uh, I also take my child to school, um, over bike, um, and so I, I just wanted to, um, provide, uh, some community input that, uh, closing the bridge would significantly alter the ability to have a walkable city, um, or a city, uh, where, um, uh, non-vehicular transportation can be used, um, so I wanted to implore the council to consider that, uh, in the decision-making process, thank you.
Thank you, can I ask you, what, what school do you take your child to?
Uh, he goes to Bryn Mawr.
Okay, so you go over the bridge and you go to the east?
Uh, that is correct, Mayor.
Okay. All right, uh, Kevin Bernard? Sorry about the name pronunciation, I messed him up.
Kevin speaking, uh, Mayor, I respectfully ask permission to follow, uh, another person's comment first, this is a colleague of mine from, uh, Loma Linda University, since I've already spoken, I would like to have this person speak first ahead of me and then I could follow them, do I have permission for that?
I'd, I'd prefer, since you've already started, that you, they just get going, we have a lot of people that wanna speak tonight, so.
Okay, let me grab some notes. Good evening, Mayor, my name is Kevin Bernard and I am a student at the Public Health University here at Loma Linda, Loma Linda University, I rode my bicycle here tonight, it's parked in the back. I believe that there is an infrastructure issue in this city. How can people walk around? As we get older, living in a blue zone, we should be walking to stay fit. We are leaders in the world and we still don't have enough walkable paths, I ride my bicycle everywhere on campus, I bike to commute, there is cars cutting me off left and right, it's very scary, it's, I have a lot of fear from vehicles and I believe that we need to redesign our city so that it can be more walkable and so that we can be supportive of people with disabilities, for example, I see we have a community member here with a wheelchair, can I ask how that bridge is accessible to them? It's accessible to, for me, but it might not be accessible for them, so where is this individual's accommodation? We do have the resources available from the state to change the city so that it can be a resilient hub and we can redesign infrastructure to continue making the city more walkable for all people, including those with disabilities, for people who have disabilities like myself and the community member here, sitting towards the back, and then we could serve as a model for the entire world and they can see that the quality of life is better in blue zone cities, because they are designed to include those that have disabilities and to be walkable, and I believe the bridge should be kept open, it might need to be renovated so that it can become again a symbol for the world and be inclusive for people with disabilities, we should start with that and use our resources for that, so please do consider keeping the bridge open and having it serve as a model for the world, including our community members, those with disabilities and those without, like for example, the gentleman in the wheelchair can also be able to use that bridge, because not everyone has cars, and with that, I'm done.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, Robert Carrate?
Good evening, um, Mayor and council members, um, I just wanted to put my input on this subject, um, about, uh, a year ago, I, I came to the city and after coming through a, a series of life-changing events, and, um, I just wanted to, to emphasize, I, I probably speak with, with some other people here, that, um, one of the things that made me feel most welcome to be here, uh, in this city is, is the blue zone status and the ability to be able to walk from one place to the other, uh, uh, with ease, a lot more ease, uh, than probably any other city that I've lived in, um, I, I really think this city has a reputation of, uh, a positive reg, reputation, um, I personally walk, uh, that bridge and walk for my health and wa, I actually live in the Mission Creek District as well, um, and I just wanted to come down here and, and just be one of these, these people that, uh, since I've been new to the city to tell you that, um, uh, I would like that to stay open, uh, because it benefits me, um, it benefits my health and it also, um, is probably one of the reasons why people, uh, uh, this is considered a blue zone, because it, it gives people more opportunity to, to be healthy and to walk around, uh, to, to, uh, be able to just, uh, enjoy their community and enjoy their city, and, um, I don't think that, uh, it would, uh, be a good thing to, to let something like that just go away, so, I just wanted to give my, my opinions on that and I enjoy the city and I appreciate the time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Wendy Thomas?
Good evening, everybody, um, the only thing I have to say is about the bridge, I would like it to stay open because that is the path that I use to walk my dog twice a day, um, he loves the little route that we go and he knows it by heart, if I could leave him off the leash, which I don't, he would be able to get home if he was, uh, uh, you know, if something happened to me, he would be able to get to his house knowing his path and that is part of his path twice a day, so I just would like for the bridge to stay open for everybody's benefit, I don't understand why or I don't know how that would benefit the people that are willing to walk for, like Robert said, for their health and, you know, stuff like that, and the other gentleman being able to take his child to work and stuff, so, or to school, so I just don't, I don't think it should be closed from my personal opinion, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Brianna Egan?
Hi, good evening, um, Mayor, City Council and staff, uh, my name is Brianna Egan, I am a resident of the city, um, located in, uh, District Four, and I'm also here to urge you to keep the pedestrian bridge open, um, it's actually a critical link in the city's trail system, it links the Edison Eastman Trail with the San Timoteo Creek Trail and it provides a safe and quiet route for pedestrians and cyclists to comfortably travel through the city, um, so for many, like we've heard here today, including myself, um, the pedestrian bridge is not just a convenience or a nice to have, but it's actually a necessity, so I personally use it to commute to the university campus via bicycle, um, it allows me to bypass the hazards of busy streets like Barton Road and closing the bridge would severely impact my ability to safely and easily travel through the city on bike, um, and it would also impact those who rely on it for exercise, recreation and travel, um, I wanna point out that this is the only separated bikeway that we have in the entire city, um, it's the highlight of my commute and I think we should actually be enhancing and building more like this, um, last week while I was passing over the bridge on my bike, I met a senior who lives in the Mission Lane neighborhood and she told me that she relies on the bridge to walk over to Clark's, Stater Brothers and Walmart on Barton and Mountain View to do her shopping because she doesn't have a car. If the bridge were closed, this person and others in the neighborhood like her would not have a safe way to buy their groceries or run errands on foot or bike, um, so consider also the economic impact that this would have on sales tax, um, and revenue to the city if the bridge were closed, um, I think it would be short-sighted to close the bridge, um, it would also contradict the city's commitment to community health and well-being, um, and um, it, so there's no clear evidence that links it to increased crime, um, but if that were the case, I think there's ways to mitigate that, um, maybe the city could install security cameras, for example, um, but I don't think that we should let a narrow slice of residents make decisions that take away amenities for the larger community, um, so in summary, I think, I wanna share that the bridge is an asset to our community, I support keeping it fully open and I think we should be enhancing our trails network and our bike, uh, our bike network instead of shutting the things down, um, and I'll also add that the bridge could use some love, uh, there's actually a large pothole on the northern end of the bridge, so I think that could be a trip, um, hazard, um, so if we can get that filled, that would be great, um, and so I just thank you for listening to the community seeking more input, um, I ask that you keep the bridge open and that you work to enhance our trail system for the benefit of the community, thank you.
Thank you very much. What, just to make sure we didn't cross any names, did you have one more? We might have already heard from them.
We have a Bobby Garrity.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Mayor, members of the council, I'm here today to, um, ask that you keep this bridge open, uh, I have ridden across that bridge many times and have loved every moment of it, because it's an excellent route, it connects two great trail systems and so, uh, closing it would be, would create a choke point, um, that would be a great loss to the city. The, the increase of travel time for people who can't or are unable to drive as a result of that being closed would be immense, and even for those who, who can drive as a result of that, uh, more driving means more emissions, um, it means worse air pollution and it also means more car accidents, which I hope you'll remember is one of the largest causes of death among children in the United States. And so I ask that not only you keep this bridge open, but that you also seek long-term to improve walkability and bikability throughout the entire city, because that is how we make a city that is both more sustainable, healthier and also a more enjoyable place to live, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, uh, Ryan Shaver, ship, I'm, I'm gonna butcher it, man, I'm just not going to, so.
It's Chavern, that's okay.
Chavern, sir.
Hello, Mayor, City Council, staff, my name is Ryan Chavern and I am a resident of Ragsdale Road, um, and I'm here to speak to you in support of actually closing access to the bridge, my wife has worked for the university for the past decade, during COVID, our family made the decision to evaluate where we live, where we raise our children and where our children go to school, we chose Loma Linda for our home because of the community, schools and safety, we invested in this community by purchasing a home here. Over the past year, that sense of safety has been shattered, during twenty twenty three alone, there was four instances where police were called to Ragsdale due to criminal activity, two times, this was related to an individual using the bridge to gain access to Ragsdale and attempt to gain entry into cars parked along the street, police responded both times, but were unable to locate the individuals, the other two times were related to home break-ins, deputies on scene attributed those break-ins to individuals using the bridge as an access point into our community, the most recent incident occurred on February third, twenty twenty four, my family and I had just finished, uh, attending the weekly farmer's market at the Grove School in Redlands, as we were driving home, we noticed a helicopter low above our neighborhood, while it's not unusual with the hospital to have helicopters, what is unusual is that it was a police helicopter and how it was right above our home, much to our surprise and our children's concern, when we pulled onto our street, we saw no less than six sheriff's SUVs and multiple deputies in front of our house and all along the cul-de-sac, after conversing with the deputies, we learned that a home on our street had again been broken into, our sense of safety has been shattered, my children no longer feel safe in their beds at night because they're afraid that our home is gonna be the next one broken into, for those that believe that bridge access is not an issue, please provide the evidence of that, the deputies that have been on our street strongly disagree with you, homelessness, homeless people have begun to use the pathway behind our home to urinate and drink, we have found empty beer and liquor bottles on the bike path and my children have had the misfortune of looking out their window hoping to see bunnies playing in the grass and instead. playing in the grass, and instead seeing homeless people changing their clothes and urinating in the bushes. Homeless have also used the bridge as an access point onto the street, but not onto the bike trail as its intended use. The trail is littered with trash, graffiti and drug paraphernalia. The bike trail has become a hotbed for dirt bikes as well, not electric bikes, but gas-powered dirt bikes. Jumps have been made in the dirt and these people use the bike trail not for its intended purpose, but for an area to meet up and disrupt our peaceful community. I've also come to learn that in 2015, the community to the east of Ragsdale had the same safety issues. During that time, the city of Loma Linda did the correct thing and closed the gate. In actuality, both bridges should have been closed at that time. To the folks that oppose closing the bridge on Ragsdale, I would point out that our community has become a choke point for homeless, transients and criminals to use the quick escape of the bridge to escape the many cameras and watchful eyes of our street. To the folks that say keep it open during daylight hours, I would like you to know that according to numerous studies, a majority of home break-ins occur during the hours of 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. when people are at work and away from their homes. Opening the gates during those hours would do nothing but add time and additional financial strain onto the city as they use resources to open and close those gates. To the folks that say adding security cameras to the bridge would help, I'll ask you, who is going to monitor those cameras? Families all over Loma Linda post videos about people coming onto their property. Cameras help after the crime and damage have already been done, not before. Criminals don't mind their faces being seen on cameras. And again, where is the funding going to come for this? I understand people use the bridge for exercise. My family loves to go out behind our home and enjoy the outdoors. But I've done the math, and by using Van Louven as a detour, it adds less than a quarter mile to a route that one would take. This is roughly four minutes walking and two minutes by bike. And this is what I ask, is the perceived convenience of the bridge worth the safety and security of our children? Is your occasional use of the bridge worth the theft of goods from our homes that we work so hard for? Is the use of the bridge so necessary that our street must feel violated and unsafe? The only fiscally responsible way to help with this issue is to close the bridge, just like the other bridge was closed in 2015. I ask you tonight to consider for the safety of our children, the safety of our property, and to help restore the sense of safety that our street once provided. While we might be a small street, we are the ones being largely impacted by this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. When I initially received this complaint, I took it upon myself to do a little background and investigation. So can we get access to those pictures? So I went out there about two weeks ago. And I actually went out at about 3:30 in the afternoon, somewhere between 3:00 and 3:30. And I walked the bridge and I walked the bike path. And I want to show you a picture of the first thing that I saw when I walked over there at 3:30 in the afternoon. Okay, this gentleman, a homeless gentleman, was peeing in front of me on the bike path, directly on the other side of the bridge. I noticed there's quite a bit of graffiti all over the bridge. I noticed that city staff has been trying to remove it because I can see places where it's been covered over by paint. You can see the paint on the wall of the drainage or the wash. That's where graffiti was, and I'm assuming either county or city staff has painted over that. Go ahead, next slide. Again, this is looking back, back up one. This is looking at the houses that are directly right next to this bridge right there on Ragsdale. I mean, they are right, right there. Next, next slide. Again, more graffiti all over the place. I actually went back there today as a follow-up and I found additional graffiti that was not there from the pictures I took two weeks ago. Next picture. There's a picture of your notice, Jarb. Keep going. So this is the bike path on the south side of the wash. The north side of the wash is actually posted no trespassing by the county flood control, I'm assuming. Correct, Jarb?
Yes.
Okay. So only the south side of the wash is actually a bike path or legally available. The other thing, in doing some research, I was wondering exactly how people get to places we saw. And I'm not talking about the people that testified tonight, but I read a lot of emails from folks that said that they use the bridge routinely to go get groceries and things like that. And I was trying to figure that out and I thought, well, maybe they're cutting through across the railroad tracks. And I looked up federal law and of course, that's illegal. You cannot traverse any of that railroad track property legally. And that's probably why there is a fence here. In communicating with city staff and some other folks, I've been told that that fence routinely gets holes cut in it and that people do traverse the railroad tracks illegally, which they're not supposed to do. So I hope we're not contributing to that. Go ahead, next slide. Another look here at the railroad tracks that are behind it. Keep going. You can also see some trash and stuff. Keep going. That's kind of a, we're taking a kind of a panoramic from east to west. Keep going. So, keep going. I actually walked this, I'm sorry, this is the closed gate on the north side of the bridge, which shows the county access point, which that's, and the no trespassing sign from the county there. Next, next slide, keep going, keep going. And this is more about the community right there in the houses. Okay. I found this gate wide open. Now, I know this is supposed to be secured. When I came back today, it was secured. Talking again to city staff and people, I understand the transients routinely cut the locks off of this. This is the north side. This is the side nobody is supposed to be on, but apparently the transients routinely cut the locks off of these gates. Go ahead, next, next picture. There's the county, no trespassing. Next, next slide, next slide. So I walked up the path and exactly decided to take a look at what, what, what some of these access points would have been to Mountain View and their other areas. This, this little driveway actually has a name, but this is where people are now coming. Go ahead, next slide. Go ahead, next slide. And they're dumping all their trash. In fact, as I pulled up there two weeks ago, I saw a truck dumping trash, but by the time I got up there, the truck had, the truck had already taken off. That's why you see the wet tire tracks they're leaving. So there is a, there is a large yellow gate that goes across this, but apparently the lock was cut off of this gate and there were people back there dumping. Jarb, do you know how often your public works people clean that?
Pretty often.
Pretty often. That's what I thought. Okay, next slide, please. That's actually pretty unfortunate. So this is Mountain View Bridge. This is right down the road from that, from the pedestrian bridge. And this is where I discovered that appears to be several transients that are living underneath the bridge, literally a couple hundred feet from the pedestrian bridge and both the apartments and the houses on Ragsdale. Next slide. Again, you can see the graffiti that's constantly being painted over. Next slide. Keep going. This is the pathway to go down onto the, onto the bike path. So what I learned is that no matter what direction you're going, if you want to get up over the railroad tracks, absent going east, like the gentleman was talking about going to Bryn Mawr, but if you're coming west, you have to get up on Mountain View anyway and you have to cross Mountain View if you want to get to the university. There's no way to take this bike path to the university because this, if you keep going west, it eventually dumps you off onto Van Louven. Next slide. Again, that's coming up the bike path. They see the graffiti there. This is the tunnel that goes underneath the Mountain View Bridge. I actually walked that tunnel today and I found that they broke, there's no, it says there's monitored by cameras, but there's no cameras there. So is that just not true or the camera's been stolen?
No, there's no camera.
Okay. So I don't know if that's a false sense of security, but I personally would, would probably not traverse that tunnel by myself. I found lots of trash and stuff around it. I found that they had broken out the lights probably to access the electricity. Is that correct?
They broke the light, yes.
So they can get electrical?
Yeah.
Yeah. Next. Again, further evidence that people are living under the bridge. This was, this, again, this was two weeks ago. Next slide. Next slide. Oh, there we go. Okay. And again, these are, there's, I would, I would guess probably four or five people living right underneath Mountain View right there. And it's a couple hundred feet to get to that pedestrian bridge and into those neighborhoods. Next slide. Next slide. All right, keep going. Okay. Now, this is where we have to show you the difference. This is actually the other bridge that was closed in 2015. This is off of Mission Creek and this connected to the park behind it. I had forgotten about that and I was on the city council in 2015 when we were approached by the Mission Creek Homeowners Association. And they begged us to close the bridge. And their assertion was that people were coming from across the wash there, parking at the park or doing whatever, coming across the bridge and causing problems in the neighborhood. I confirmed this with the Mission Creek Homeowners Association at their board meeting a week ago. And they said that they absolutely were thrilled that that bridge had closed because they believe it had cut down all the crime that was coming into those neighborhoods. They also authored a letter in support of the other neighborhoods and believe that both bridges should be closed. What I'd like to point out about this photo is that you see something glaringly absent from it. Graffiti. Because people are not using it. Okay, next slide. That's also on that other bridge where it's closed from there. I think I took some panoramic shots. Go ahead, next slide, next slide. Okay, this is a video of the other bridge. So you can see the other bridge actually is right next to houses also. And people in these two particular houses were the ones that were complaining the most about people walking across that bridge and potentially causing issues.
This is the south side?
Yes. North, north side, actually. Yes. But that's the, that's the east bridge that was closed in 2015. All right, next slide. So I went back out there this afternoon, again, late in the afternoon, around three o'clock or so. And as I, first thing I noticed when I got out of my car was some of the trash on the ground. Next slide. And that's a pack of discarded cigarettes that is actually right next to the houses there on Ragsdale. Next slide. That's wrapping papers for various other types of stuff you would smoke. Next slide. That's the new graffiti that I noticed. I do see the pothole the young lady was referring to. There is a significant hole right there. And one of the other things that was brought up tonight that I thought was fascinating is that this is not wheelchair accessible for a number of reasons. But anyway, go ahead and click next. This is where I walked the tunnel. Go ahead, next. These were new people. This is that same shot that I had underneath the, underneath the bridge, but apparently they like to ride bikes also. Next slide. There were some discarded cans and trash. That clearly indicates to me that there's homeless, homeless people that are, that was right underneath the tunnel going under Mountain View. Not exactly sure what that is. That was, used to be a water bottle. Next slide. This is some of the graffiti that's in that underneath there. And this has obviously been covered over by city staff multiple times. You can go ahead and advance through these next couple of slides here. And what I, what I really found interesting about all of this is I really felt like we are letting these residents down. And I believe this was a well-intended idea. I believe that our city still has the same, very same goals, that we want this to be a walkable, livable community. We want to, we want to esteem the benefits of being a blue zone. But we really need to think about how we set up some of this stuff. And I think the idea of putting these pedestrian bridges and some of these trails right next to the railroad tracks, nobody probably could have foreseen a future where we are dealing with some of the homeless issues that we're dealing with now. So I gotta, I gotta tell you guys that I was pretty convinced just by looking at it for myself, especially one of the first things when I walk up and there's a homeless guy peeing right there, right in front of me, that was pretty convincing to me. So my position where I stand on this is I believe both of these bridges should be closed. I've, I've looked, I've walked it. I don't ride a bike, so I didn't ride it, but I don't think it's too much of an inconvenience to go around and to cross some of the other areas to cross to get to some of our more advanced trail system. So that's it for, for what I had, but I wanted you guys to see what I had looked at. Thank you very much. So any discussion here from the council?
All right. Before I get into this by itself, I had some emails. I'm not going to read them as I did the previous one because they say the same thing. But there were three points that are tangent to this. Two of them reopened the other bridge. One of them asked if Mission Road is ever going to open up again, and I told them it's not. That was a correct response, right?
Correct.
Okay. They were upset about that. I told them to bring their concerns to the city council at a later time, whenever they felt comfortable. Third, so this was actually very interesting. When we talk about walkability, one individual brought that they were handicapped. On Mountain View on the west side, the bridge doesn't have any railing. So if you're in a wheelchair and you're trying to go down, there is a possibility, and I guess it's happened before according to them, that someone falls in that entrance by the park. So not related to this bridge in particular, but just talking about walkability and, you know, if they have to take Mountain View, we need to make sure that if we're going that route, that we secure Mountain View for all types of pedestrians. Those were my three tangents to the bridge itself.
My comments are, I mean, we, we have a dilemma. We want a walkable, friendly community. And, and we're running into some challenges. And the testimony tonight from community members would lean heavily in favor of continuing to have these bridges open. And yet, the mayor and Councilman Gindal have provided evidence that there are some significant problems. What would help me is to hear from community members that want the bridges open after seeing the challenges that we have. What do you think? Because I can tell you as a councilman, I want a walkable, friendly community. That's my priority. And yet, it sounds, it, the evidence appears that on the one hand, there are people that are, that are benefiting from a walkable bridge to get from one, from south side or north side to the south side. And, and, but we've got vagrants. And that, that's an ongoing issue, not just in Loma Linda, it's in all of Southern California. So I guess I would like to hear from the people who have testified on behalf of maintaining an open bridge, of how you would suggest we address this because we want a safe community as well.
Yeah, so again, my name is Brianna. I, I would say that I think the homelessness issue is separate from whether we, like, is separate from the bridge altogether. And I think that, you know, the efforts that the city has made to outreach to homeless individuals is important and that should be continued and perhaps strengthened with more resources, like offering vouchers to, at motels. I know that other counties do that. Or like setting up temporary housing situations for people who are homeless. So I think that we can find solutions. And personally, as I do bike on this bridge and these trails, I'm not, frankly, I'm not afraid. I, I don't feel that it's a threat to my safety. And that may be different from how you feel, but to me, I, I see them as a human being. They have needs as well. And I think as a society, we should be working to assist them. So, so we all live in a society and we, we have these challenges, but I don't think that that should be. these challenges, but I don't think that that should be that should prevent us from enjoying these amenities and good mobility within the city.
Can I ask you a question? Do you live nearby this bridge?
I live about a quarter mile away, so I bike, I bike over, cross the bridge, and then to get to the university, I take the trail out to where it ends at Van Louven, and then take those streets and cross over.
You go over Anderson?
Right.
So you move from the north side to the south side?
Via Anderson. She has to ride, because there's no connector that goes over the tracks. You have to ride to Anderson and then go up over the hill that way.
Correct, but that to me is far safer to, to bicycle on that route compared to taking Barton Road. It would just be way too fast and I feel like I'm taking my life into my hands when I do that. So, yeah, this is.
What about taking Van Louven all the way down?
I have done that. It's just not safe to me as well because, like, there's a lot of blind spots when you turn into the road and then cars, it's only a one lane or two lane, but one lane in both directions, and so there's cars that will run behind you, trying to pass you, and that, like, feels very dangerous to me, so.
I appreciate your comment because Barton, I'm not always feeling safe in my car, let alone a bicycle on Barton Road. Other comments?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Mayor, I do appreciate the, the photos you provided us here today. And, and I do agree that the issue of homelessness is one of the greatest, if not the greatest issue we face. It's the, the greatest issue our city faces, it's the greatest issue our state faces, and may well be the greatest issue our, our society at large faces. But the issue of homelessness is not caused by this bridge. Homelessness is caused by a lack of housing. And you will not solve this issue by closing a bridge. You can only solve this issue by making it easier and less expensive to build housing.
So let me, let me stop both of you guys for a second because you and and others have talked about homeless as the issue. I don't think anybody is saying homeless is the issue. I think that the people that have brought this forward are complaining about crime. They're complaining about very real issues that are happening in front of their children. I don't, I don't think this is about solving the world's homeless problem, which none of us are going to be able to do here. I mean, it's so complex. And for somebody who works in the field and knows a lot of what is going on in that realm, I can tell you the challenges that a lot of the homeless folks that we have out there are suffering mental health issues. So when we are talking about people that are literally camping within a few hundred feet of people's homes, that scares me a lot. My family lives over there. I come from these neighborhoods. I have a two-year-old at home. I am, I am not a person who will sacrifice my family's safety over taking an extra quarter of a mile out of my way, but that's me. So I want to hear if somebody has a solution on how we stop the crime and we stop the people from coming into the neighborhoods, but we, we are not going to solve the homeless problem. That's not going to happen.
And to be clear, Ms. Mayor, I was responding to the slides you shared. I was not responding to other comments made. But I, I do want to share one other thing. A few months ago, I had a bike stolen from right outside my house. And I, I can tell you there was no trail or no bridge that anybody used to take it. In fact, I know for a fact that they used the street. And, and they used a car, likely a truck. So I just want to emphasize that I don't see any connection between this bridge and the issue of crime. I don't think that this will reduce crime in any way. There are other ways to steal, to rob, whatever. I, I do not believe there's evidence for that.
Okay, I would, I would ask one more question there. If you could explain to me the difference between both bridges where one is covered in graffiti and the other is not. Is graffiti related to crime or no?
I'm not familiar with the other bridge. I cannot comment on that.
So what does the, yeah, let's take the homeless people out of it. With that bridge covered in graffiti, what does that mean to most people?
I can speak for anyone but myself, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Understand you. You have not seen evidence of crime because the bridge is open. Is that correct?
And, and if there is, I would love to see it, but.
I'm sorry, say again?
I'm sorry. I said if there is, I'd be open to seeing it, but I, I don't buy the theory that closing this bridge will reduce crime.
Okay. Thank you.
Sir.
To address the comment that there's no crime because of the bridge, we had six sheriff's SUVs on our street for three hours. The, the resources that that cost the city, and they checked every one of our cameras, and we live on a cul-de-sac. So none of the cameras caught anybody coming into the neighborhood or leaving. And the deputies made the assertion that the person came across the bridge and exited across the bridge to avoid the Ring cameras, the, the security systems. And again, the, the financial strain that it caused on the city, those deputies could have been out doing something else. And just a simple deterrent of closing the bridge, and I can provide, the homeless are not just on, what would that be, the, the north side of the bridge? This side of the bridge. They're, they're on the other side, and I can show that, yes. So that photo is transient individuals on the, on the home side, where all, where all of our homes are. And again, my children, they're nine and 13. They look out the window. Our home backs up to the greenbelt, to the bike path. They expect to look out there and see bunnies. And they see homeless people, potential homeless encampments, and it's overflowing from the Mountain View area.
But you understand our dilemma.
Absolutely.
Is what, what you're describing is a single incident.
No. What I'm describing is multiple incidents over the past year. So there's four instances that we are aware of where people have crossed the bridge to check car doors, so they cross the bridge on a bicycle, check the car doors, go back across the bridge.
And, and how do you know that?
I, I work from home, and so I was actually the one that called sheriff's deputies on two occasions when I saw the individual on the bike. So that's, that's me testifying to that. And then the most recent incident, we can call any number one of the deputies to testify what occurred on that day.
What do you propose is, I understand, shut the bridge down. What other alternatives do you see that might be possible?
If, that, that is the only fiscally responsible solution. Because opening.
We're not talking about money right now. We're talking about safety.
Sure. So, so if we're talking about safety, if safety is more important, if safety is the most important thing, then closing the bridge is the safest thing to do. So, so what we're, what needs to be weighed is what is more important? Is recreational activity more important? Or is the safety of our homes, our, the things that, you know, that we work so hard for, of our children, is that more important?
Sure. I have children, grandchildren, so I, I'm sensitive to that. But what I'm also hearing from other community members is that the access to the university is, is a major benefit to them if they have that bridge.
I would argue in opposition that I, I believe it's a detour to use the bridge to get to the university. Van Louven is more of a, as the crow flies straight down, as opposed to going down Ragsdale Road, across the bridge, under Mountain View, all the way down to the Veterans Village where it exits Van Louven. It, that, it's, it's not a logical route to use, in my opinion.
All right, I'll take over.
You want to, you want to wait till he gets back or do you want to go? Anybody else need to take a restroom break?
All right. First of all, thank you, Mayor. I don't think you'll see many cities where we get to have this kind of back and forth. And thank you to the public. I can hear the nervousness in some of the voices, so probably weren't expecting any questions back, but I think that's what makes the city great is we can have that discourse. Earlier in the meeting, we had that presentation, or we had a few individuals from the university Mobile Realty. I think the issue we have is very similar, where if you're by the railroad tracks, we continue to have issues with crime with homelessness, and they're very visible because those houses border the railroad. So whether there is a bridge or not, one thing I've noticed is if there is any housing along those railroads, you're going to have some complaints about those situations. While I agree we do need to figure out what to do with this bridge, I think that whole three-mile stretch that we have in our city, we need to come up with, as the mayor said, creative solutions to address the crime situation and then also homelessness. So not just at the bridge, but also further down. One thing I asked last time was if we had data on the crime that has taken place. So even if we were to close down the bridge using some data on, hey, this is the crime rate before and crime rate after, unfortunately, we don't have those statistics. So if we're going to treat this as a pilot, I'd like to see how closing down the bridge a year from now has affected safety in that region. Or is it that it hasn't made a difference at all and people are just taking a different route to get into those neighborhoods because they are a little more high-income than the neighboring ones? Honing in on that comment about finding creative solutions. So graffiti sucks, yes, but I, I think having a little graffiti does not outweigh the benefits that come with the ease of access. One thing I was looking that I, I think we can fix is all the trash on the street. If we can put trash bins. I don't think we're the only city that has this issue. There are other cities throughout America. If we can study what they've done and how they've been successful in dealing with their bridges, rights of access, and still keeping a relatively clean community and a safe community. This is, I'm pretty sure not a unique problem that we have, but maybe it's a learning we can take from others. I'm not totally opposed to shutting down the bridge, but I would like to see some alternatives before we do that and some more data, which I don't think we have at this moment. So that's where I stand right now, and I sympathize with some of the comments you made. My house got broken into. I'm not by this location, and I know it's very scary. We had to call the police and I didn't want to go in my room because I didn't know if the person was still hiding there. So it's a serious issue, but I think it's an issue that the whole city needs attention for, not just this one area. And I think we can come up with creative solutions to address both the crime and still ease of access in this little part of the city.
All right, thank you. Yes, go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, and thank you so much for allowing me to come up and speak and make another comment. Councilmember Jindal, thank you for your comments as well. I support the proposal from Councilmember Jindal in having an increased amount of data collected on the area. There's also a broken window theory that I've heard about since I was a child. It's a theory that talks about unclean or unkempt houses leading to crime. It's somewhat controversial. As a person with a disability and a person that's been traumatized by society by not having a human-centric approach, but instead we live in an automobile, an industrial-centric society, quite often I've been thrown out of people's homes. And I've been re-traumatized, again, as an individual with a disability and being neurodivergent. I have autism. Most people don't even understand how to accommodate my needs. Most people kick me out of homes. And I am a person that has had to live on the street. I have had to survive overnight on the streets. Some cities provide shelters at churches and I have seen that, oh, excuse the interpreter. I have not seen that type of welcoming center or shelter for homeless people here in the city. It's my first year living here. My first week at the university, which was last fall, I had to, I was doing a house search or apartment search. I was in that search for two months before I found an affordable location. I was stuck at an Airbnb. And an Airbnb isn't really sustainable housing. It's really a hotel. At some point, you get kicked out of an Airbnb, especially if there's a problem. Airbnbs are designed to not have the renter have any rights. If the owner of that property decides to kick you out, you get kicked out. That happened to me at three in the morning because a Airbnb owner decided to do that to me. So that's the reality. There's no tenant law. There's no contract that comes into play with Airbnb apartments. So what was I able to do? I was stuck at that time. Most other communities where I have been stuck, I've been able to find a church where I'm welcomed. When it's not in use, folks are allowed to sleep in that area to have a safe place to be, and that's because it's a church. A church is there to provide those social services, and I haven't seen any like, anything like that in this city. Now, there is a Seventh-day Adventist church here, and that might be a decision that they have to make if somebody would like to propose that. Secondly, infrastructure needs to be designed. Unfortunately, the infrastructure here is designed for vehicles and not for humans, not for people. And if we can see the pictures, we see ugly ditches. Ditches are ugly. Ditches don't have any trees. Ditches don't have any vegetation or flowers. Ditches are ugly and are industrial. That's what ditches are. So what is the point of having ditches like that? I know we call it flood control, but trees are the best flood control. Why not redesign the infrastructure in that area so that it provides people a much more enjoyable speaker experience when they walk? If that's the case, then we won't have the broken window theory creep into these areas. Because we are proactive in making a human-centered approach, and that's what's reflected in living in a blue zone area. We support humans, and humans support each other as a community to create a safe place to be. A ditch is not a safe place to be. So I just want to share that and let you know that budgets are getting tight, and we as Seventh-day Adventists here in the city council, we need to share and provide resources for the community that will reinforce the infrastructure that we live in as human-centric, instead of kicking people out and sending them away where they'll be stuck without support. And this would also avoid having everything fall on law enforcement to have to do something about it. Law enforcement's job should be prevent things not to have to deal with the problems that we have. And I believe the city and our infrastructure can be redesigned, I think by first starting with an environmental study, planting more trees.
I think we're good.
Having more lights in the city as well, and then moving forward from there with building infrastructure. Getting rid of ditches.
Thank you for your comments, sir. You were going to ask a question?
Yeah. Question to the presenter. I have a question to, to the presenter. What would he recommend the appropriate action would be, given the complexities of the situation?
I really support what Councilmember Jindal said, an environmental study, a human-centric walkability and walkable resilience study. California has fundings, funding for those types of studies. There is an existing grant for blue zone areas. They would be more than happy to provide funds from Sacramento to get that study done. That would allow the city to know if the infrastructure can be redesigned, even the bridge itself. And in that case, if that is done, the bridge could serve as a model for others.
Thank you. I will, I will, I'll make a couple of comments here. I think, like I mentioned before, the idea was, was pretty grand when, when this was thought of years ago, 20 years ago. And, and nobody could have imagined really the today's world impacts that that would have on some of these communities. I can tell you from my professional opinion, when we talk about how accessible some of these communities are, like the other gentleman mentioned about his bike being stolen, it's very hard to get cars in and out of some of these, especially the Mission Creek and Mission Trails communities because they were built where it's very hard to get cars in and out. And I can tell you that Mission Creek, their assertion is that they were suffering from a lot of crime, a lot of break-ins, a lot of things that were happening. And when that, when that bridge to the west was, I'm sorry, to the east. And when that, when that bridge to the west was, I'm sorry, to the east was closed, it stopped all that. And I can understand why. From my professional opinion, the ease of access in and out and across that bridge makes it very, very easy to get away from law enforcement. And that's from my experience. I mean, and that's just, it is what it is. I think it's much harder for somebody to be out driving around in a car and get into some of those neighborhoods and do some of those things. But that's from my 30 years of experience in doing that. I know this is not a popular thing, and I understand that. I've read probably a lot, a lot of emails from people and expressed their concerns. What I wish we had done, or what we could do, and I don't know what the feasibility is, is figuring out another way to run the trail system down along California or somewhere from that, I'm looking at a map here right now in front of me, and how we could have somehow rerouted to completely avoid, number one, the tracks, the railroad tracks, but also the wash. And I, and I just, you know, I don't know. There's a reason why the, why the north side of the wash is off limits. Why is that?
It's habitat for animals.
Okay, that was not the answer I thought I was going to get.
That was county flood control.
Well, I know it's county flood control, but I was actually perplexed by why the north side is completely off limits, but the south side is okay along that wash.
It was a habitat.
So that's why, if you go to the community garden, that's why the north side is all bushes. And by the community gardens paved because it's habitat.
Interesting. Yeah, I don't know. It just, it's, I don't know, but I fully believe that closing that bridge. And I will tell you, the biggest thing for me was when I went out there and I saw that man urinating. And I know that right behind me was these folks and their house. Did you wish to speak, ma'am? Go ahead. Please, come on.
Hi, good evening. And I, one thing that really has resonated me, the gentleman in the back, he did mention that he lives in Mission Creek. And he has to pass his neighborhood, he has to pass Mission Trails, and he also has to go through, behind our street, which is Mission Lane. He has to go through a whole bunch of houses. And he lives right on Mission Creek where that bridge was open. My question is, why are his children able to sleep perfectly safe and sound at night and not mine? I'm not understanding if, if this bridge being open is no big deal, let's open up his bridge as well. It'll give him much faster access to the biking trails, and he wouldn't have to go behind my neighborhood to be able to gain access. And I also agree with Councilmember Jindal. Maybe there, there is something we could do regarding research or anything regarding the crimes. What if we closed the bridge and compared the crime moving forward versus 2023, or even before the bridge was closed? If, if that's not feasible, let's open up the other bridge in the other community and see if crime rises. If crime doesn't exist, maybe that bridge could stay open and ours could stay open as well. I'm just not understanding why my children have to be exposed to these homeless people and all this crime and not the children in the Mission Creek. I, I saw a lot of speakers that are coming from Mission Creek, and Mission Creek had their own bridge, and they closed it because of the crime.
Help me understand what your perspective is. Are you supporting the bridge remaining open, or are you wanting it to close?
I would like for that bridge to be closed for concerns regarding the crime, just like the Mission Creek Bridge.
Okay, so you're saying we close one bridge for crime, we should close the second bridge for crime?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
If I could, you're good, sorry. I asked this question last time, but before I ask it, I think people, again, this is selective hearing because only the people that want it open reached out, but there were, there was interest in opening up that second bridge. Aside from that, my question is, and I know someone answered this last time, why can't we block off access to those homes from this bridge and only make it to the trail?
I think that negates what everybody out here wants, because they're actually going through these neighborhoods to get to the other parts of the trail.
They're going through Ragsdale?
Yeah. It goes along down the power lines right along next to Ragsdale. Yep, good.
We have a vast television audience, so we want you to be.
At least three people are watching.
So Ragsdale is a street for cars. Where we are accessing the bridge for walking and biking is down the Edison Easement Trail, which is a paved.
Yes, they're right, I know, I'm looking at the map. They're right next to each other. You want to look at it?
Yeah, I'm familiar. Perhaps to, to close off access to neighborhoods, I know that there's fencing in front of the houses, but there may be more fencing that could be added. And as for the solutions, I think that adding security cameras to the bridge could be a solution to really kind of monitor and see.
Who would watch those cameras?
Are there other security cameras in the city? No.
Who watches them?
No, I, I think it's a reasonable request.
Yeah, but who, who watches them?
The burden on who's going to watch them is up to us. But I kind of like the suggestion that, that there be some kind of security system or observations system.
We can't even pay our bills right now, so how do we pay for that?
Before we go down that, I want to complete this line of thinking of blocking it off. So can we pull up the map? Just so I can be clear of what I'm asking.
Pictures in my file there, if you pull those up.
And while we pull that up, my whole thinking is we want to make it difficult for anyone to do anything negative.
Keep going, keep going, to the left. Keep going. Okay, stop right there. Okay, if you go one more to the left, that'll take out the barriers. If you go, if you want to go one more, that'll, that'll highlight the, actually, one more than that. That highlights the neighborhood we're talking about, yeah.
So what I'm saying is that cul-de-sac, if we block it off so that no one can jump over it, the only route you would have is going on Glenn Summer Drive, and that, in my mind, is creating a barrier from anyone escaping through the bridge.
It's already fenced.
You need to, you need to use the microphone because there are other people watching.
So where the trail is on the Edison Easement behind the homes, that my, my gate or my fence is the property line right up against that trail. So it would actually just create a worse choke point of forcing people into those three homes on the right-hand side of the, of the street. Easily accessible. They're not, they are bar, you know, four-inch gap bars. Somebody could easily hop the fence and go in that route, easily. So unless you're proposing to add additional fencing, and I'm not sure that, that is, again, is fiscally responsible for the city, when closing a gate for a period of a year and seeing what happens seems like the more logical solution here.
Can we get a street view?
I'm sorry.
Are we able to get a street view?
Uh, that's a, that's a picture. It's not, it's not a webpage. But you, can you pull up, can you pull up a browser or something?
I'm sorry?
Open up Chrome and go to maps.google.com. If you don't mind zooming in in the same place.
Where? I don't even know where we're at.
So go to Mountain View.
Mountain View.
Yep, uh, yeah, zoom in up until where the wash is. And then put it on satellite. Put it on satellite.
Where are we going?
You might never see that. I think I'm facing south, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Where are we at?
So what I'm saying is, if we were to, and I don't know how viable it is, but have like a fence right here, because that's not anyone's property, that's city, that would deter people from going into these homes. And that would create enough of a barrier to basically act as deterrence. Does it solve the issue 100%? No, but it would at least make it safer.
Yeah, go that way, go towards the bridge.
I can't. Can I?
It's on this.
Yeah, try Ragsdale. So this is where it all exits, right there at the bridge. So I think the challenge with this particular community is they flow right down into this cul-de-sac. It's not about the trail. It's just too easy for people to just come across that bridge, float onto that street right there, do whatever they're going to do and go right back over. It's just, it's too easy, and it's almost indetectable, because how do you set up to even get them? When I was driving around to do research, obviously I parked here, I got out and I walked a bunch of it. I drove over to Mountain View, got out and walked it. But if, if I was a deputy sheriff responding to a call, I wouldn't even know how to get over there. I wouldn't even know how to even coordinate getting people over there. It, it would be so easy for somebody to get away from me going across that bridge. And that's, that's my expert opinion from doing the job for a long time. I, I gotta, I gotta land on one thing that just keeps hitting, it smacked me in the face, and I gotta be honest with you guys. I went out there because I wanted to see it for myself. And, I don't know, I was a little skeptical in 2015 of the validity of the other bridge closing. But looking at both bridges, one is completely clean, and the other one is covered in graffiti and trash. And I don't care how much we talk about it, those are issues, those are telltale issues of nefarious activity. Whatever it is, whether it's transients, whether it's people coming out from other places, whether it's people riding the train tracks, I don't know. Graffiti is not a normal thing that somebody in an expensive home, like those homes are in Ragsdale, wants to see when they come out of their house. And me as a homeowner, living in those neighborhoods, that would drive me absolutely nuts. And I just feel like it's in some way selfish of others that would put the recreational aspect, like the gentleman meant, that's what he titled it, over the safety of people and their homes and the value of their homes. And I, I just, me again, having, having a family with a young child at home, it would drive me nuts. So I appreciate the fact that those people have come forward. I, I think sometimes we all have a fear that we're missing out on something because something is going to get taken away. I think there's other viable opportunities for us to look at expanded trail systems. We know we're doing a bunch of stuff in the new developments that are coming in. We're proud of all that. But I would venture to say that when we find that there was a mistake, we have to rectify it. And that's where I'm at on this one. I just, I just don't think, if you go down and look at that other bridge, do it tomorrow, it's completely clean. This one is covered in trash and graffiti, and that tells me there's issues there, and I don't care if it's space aliens that are crossing it. Does that make sense?
So we've had, heard a compelling argument from the mayor. Those of you that are wanting to maintain the bridge as an open access, I need to hear from you.
I think we have heard from quite a few, but before we go there, I just want to hone in on my point. What is stopping us from blocking off this cul-de-sac?
How?
With a wall.
Who pays for that? How is it going to be done? What's the expense?
Well, is it possible? I think is the question. Like, would that solve the issue of, so you said like the issue is that people are coming across the bridge, going into this cul-de-sac?
Because it's an easy target.
Exactly. So if we remove that being an easy target by having a wall, would that solve the issue?
I, I don't, I mean, the kind of wall you're talking about is, is incredible, and I don't know what the cost of all that would be. Jarb?
Well, you can build a wall, but again, they can go on the trail side and jump the wall. And the whole purpose of the trail is, is connectivity, so to, you would like to connect the bridge to the street, to the trail, and, and, and so.
That's why we did it in the first place.
Correct. So, so if you put in the wall, then it's just, might as well close the bridge. It's a lot easier and cheaper, but.
What about, like, rethinking our trail system to connect somewhere else down the, down the road? What about at the, the east end of, of the wash down there and coming across somehow?
Where there's no homes, right?
Yeah, and you know, we were talking about like where Mission is cul-de-sacked and trying to figure out something down there. I, I just, I don't know, I keep thinking there's got to be a better way to connect all that that avoids those homes.
Well, then you have, you have to cross that bottom road.
But I think his solution makes a little more sense, because we have two bridges, and if we, and I mean, this is an expense too, but if we were to move that bridge over, this is closed, it's useless. If we move that bridge to the east, and if we moved this one more to the west where there are no homes, which would allow a crossing.
Moving the bridge is a big deal.
Yeah, I know. That's why I said like it's going to be an expense. Whether you do a wall, whether you move the bridge, they're all expenses.
Sure.
So on the idea of adding a fence, I think the, the view that we had earlier at the Ragsdale Road, well, actually, you can see it from here too. I would suggest a fence that encircles this cul-de-sac. And perhaps there could be a gate that people in the neighborhood have a key where they can open that gate and then cross over the bridge. But the rest of the trail would be open for walk and bike access to go over the bridge. But then I guess, you know, if there are people who are crossing the bridge and committing crimes, like they would be less likely to enter at this point into the neighborhood. So that would be my suggestion, like a fence similar to.
I was thinking about that, so that's a good point.
And then I also just want to mention too, if we close the bridge, I'm afraid that it's a permanent closure. And I think that's what happened with the other bridge, so I wouldn't want to completely shut something down and not have any ability to open it up again.
But what would be the problem with shutting it down temporarily for, say, a year to see what happens?
I, I would be opposed to that. I think a year is too long. And I also think that people can come in from any direction and still do what they're doing. It's not the bridge.
I think her concern was that a year turns into 20.
Well, you got, yeah, a couple. Mr. Liu?
Yeah, so I, I appreciate very much the concerns of my Ragsdale neighbors, and, you know, I, I do really appreciate, you know, the concerns about safety. You know, particularly, you know, I have a five-year-old as well. But what I wanted to raise the question about was, if we close this bridge, is it just pushing the problem somewhere else? Is it basically, you know, crimes are going to occur regardless, you know, of what we do? Is it simply kind of like when we closed the, the first bridge, is it just pushing more of the issue westward?
Is your, is your proposal then to open the one on Mission Creek and then close this one?
So, so that's what I wanted to raise as, you know, something to discuss. You know, is closing all the bridges entirely going to just push the problem somewhere else? I think another thing to consider is that we don't want to have a city that's a fortress. We don't want to have certain areas of the city that are protected, and, you know, have the rest of the city.
I do.
So, so in this, so I appreciate that.
I, I listened to a bunch of people come in here at the beginning of this meeting and give very emotional testimony of them experiencing crime. And what they described was almost the exact same thing that we're talking about here. People coming from the railroad tracks, homeless people coming into a certain mobile home park and those people were frustrated. And they're crying out to me as a representative, asking for safety. We had, we had a big push this, this, this evening about safety, help us. We have the, the, the management of that, of that park over there asking us to help them with safety. That's, that's becoming more of a, if you look at this last election that we had here in town, the big focus was public safety. People are not feeling very safe. And so I gotta tell you, like my main focus is so people feel safe in their homes. And I appreciate all this other stuff, but at some point, we have to rethink it. So, just saying. Sorry, go ahead.
So, so I, I, I think, you know, one, one of the things that, you know, we should consider in, you know, any sort of decision that we make is a public good. And, you know, I, I do appreciate, you know, being a homeowner and, you know, having a threat. But at the same time, I think it's also something that we, looking at the broader picture, you know, of what, you know, what constitutes a community? Do we want communities that are walled off? So that we have security? Are we willing to sacrifice our ability to live so that we have security?
Good point, good point.
Yes, sir.
Again, I think it goes back to what is more important? Is safety or recreation? Mr. Liu shared about his children, so if, and, and as my wife shared, why do the children in Mission Creek, why is their safety with a closed bridge more valued by the city than the citizens of Mission Lane with an open bridge? We have the same children, we go to the same schools, why is there more value given to that? And many of the speakers have shared that they enjoy the bridges. What they didn't share is what their children experience. And when my children look out their window and see homeless people setting up encampments behind, when we're coming down the street and there is six sheriff deputy vehicles and they're there for three hours with a helicopter, that is trauma that they're experiencing.
That was one time, or has that been multiple times?
The home that I'm discussing has broke, been broken into twice over the past year.
So you've had, you've had multiple sheriff cars out multiple times?
Correct. And, and, and also the issue of people, they, so that, and I've seen it with my own eyes, so this is my own testimony, it's not hearsay, across the bridge on a bicycle, checking door handles, so they come in through the cul-de-sac, they go right back, they pass right around my house onto Glenn Summer and then come back up the bike trail and leave and go back across the bridge. They're checking cars to see if anybody left their car door open. And by the time they're gone, by the time the sheriff responds, they can go east-west on the trail and, and be gone and nobody knows, none the wiser.
Well, I, I think we can, I think we could probably be here all night. Yes, go ahead. Brief at the subject matter at hand though, please.
I will definitely be brief. I do have a couple of suggestions I'd like to share. In terms of infrastructure, we do have a world-class university just down the street. I would support asking the School of Public Health, which I'm a member of, to go ahead and conduct a research study in terms of public health for this issue. There are resources at the federal level at the Department of Transportation for bicycle lane renovations. The Department of the Interior also supports research for bicycle lanes that are used for recreational purposes, purposes. So resources are available. Also, the Department of Health and Human Services has funding available for outdoor human health, public health locations and activities. So resources and funds exist at that level, that federal level. So I would propose asking the School of Public Health, having their staff conduct some research, invite them to please use this blue zone status to be able to obtain funding so that a research study can be conducted for this situation specifically, an impact statement to be generated. And that can become again a model from the experts at the School of Public Health. That would collect some good evidence, some hard evidence about the situation, about the impacts of the infrastructure. And I know because the faculty members at the School of Public Health are world-class and they would be thrilled to conduct a research study like this. And that research can be paid for at the federal level because again, those funds exist at that level and they're there for monitoring and having secure studies. So that would be my proposal. And I have a second point of suggestion. Something called the buffer zone. Quite often in flood control areas, plant trees along the trail, the entirety of the trail, and yes, it would block some views for the homeowners. However, trees are buffers in and of themselves. And the trees would be able to follow the line of the trail and that would block from the views from people on the other side. And not only would they block the views, they do serve as flood control. And the Army Corps of Engineers can install that buffer zone to make sure that it is compliant with the environmental necessities in that area. That would be a second approach to ask the Corps of Army Engineers to help mitigate the environmental destruction in the area caused by the ditch. And they could do something and install something at the trail. They also have the ability to add infrastructure, maybe add another bridge, maybe even move the bridge. And the Corps of Army Engineers has the funding to be able to do that. We should make an invitation to the US Army Corps of Engineers to come study this issue. Thank you.
Let me respond to that.
Go ahead.
I, I'm attracted to your proposal. I also, I have experience with grants. The federal government works very, very slowly. So it could be years before we actually have any kind of an outcome to this that we can act upon. And my sense is that there are people in the neighborhood that are eager for something to happen now. What's your response to that?
My response is thank you.
Oh, okay.
I work at the EPA and I understand the slow, painful process.
I, I will tell you this, I'm not, I'm not opposed to looking into any of those options, but I would recommend that we, we close the bridge, at least to monitor for a period of time and do our own analysis and study. And maybe at the same time, we can look into that exact option. We do have potentially some new folks coming up that have some connections there at, at public health and so we can definitely look in that, but I felt compelled to bring this issue forward because I, I really do believe there, and it's, it's not just the one family that's here tonight, there's, I've, I've been, I've talked to probably 40 or 50 people in that neighborhood, including the HOAs and both HOA boards were 100% unanimous in support of this. They wrote letters. The letters are in the, in the record. So, well, so I recommend that we close these, both bridges, at least for a period of time to do some analysis.
So I agree with the mayor, but in opposite. I'd at least like to know what the solutions are before we close the bridge, because I understand the concern that if once we close it, it'll never be open again. And like it'll just die out. So I think we've heard two things, like the mayor suggested moving the bridges. I still don't know why we can't just build a wall around that cul-de-sac. Again, safety first, completely agree, but I'd at least like to know what the alternative slash solutions are before we close it. Which, how much time would that take?
Take months if not years and dollars.
How much time would it get to, would it take to get an estimate?
Again, I think what you do is just, you just move the problems. If you build a, the block wall, it's not, it's not gonna, you just move the problem because there's, there's people have lakes, they can walk around and, and, and the wall.
What did we do? How did we clue, close the first bridge? Wall or what?
Oh, no, no, we just, if we just close the bridge, it's easy, just, I just put a chain link fence.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, but, but he thinking about putting a block wall, it's, it's to close off the, the whole end of the cul-de-sac. It's, that's a lot more difficult than just close the bridge.
Well, I'm, I'm, I don't feel great about it, but I support what the mayor's saying, which is we, we stop the problem. We solve the problem for the temporary while we look for a long-term solution. I choose to believe that in the city of Loma Linda, we have options and that we can be collaborative and, and we don't have to be a south side and a north side that we can, we can cohabitate and get along. But I understand the dilemma. I don't know the solution. I don't know the solution. But I guess I would rather inconvenience people who are riding bicycles that are accessing the university than to potentially perpetuate a crime issue. And, and I don't feel like I've got the data to really say that definitively, but that's my instinct.
Do you feel more comfortable if we set a time certain? To come back and revisit?
You're saying close it now and come back?
Yeah.
Look, we've been at this for what, two and a half hours now? I, I'd say we just leave it at the next meeting. There's gonna be a change, there's gonna be new people here and let them decide.
I, I've, I felt compelled that, and this was scheduled before the election, so, but based on the urgency of, of some of the issues that were going on, I, I felt like this was something I didn't wanna string along these homeowners for months and months, so. I, I make a motion that we, we close the bridge and study the impact. I'll second that. Okay. Madam Clerk?
Motion is to close the bridge and to study the impact. There was no time period, correct?
No.
Please vote.
But, but, but part of the motion is that we follow up to see if there's a better solution because I really would like to be able to merge south side and north side, and this is one way to do that, but we've run into a glitch.
Maybe we find something that, that some of the folks out there, we do a little more digging and we end up opening both of them back up if we can figure this out. I'm 100% supportive of that. I just want to address the issue now and figure out how we, figure out if that actually solves a problem.
Please vote. Mayor Portem Daily, did you vote?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion carried by a vote of two a's and one no.
Okay. All right, I would, I would urge those that were opposed to this to keep on it and keep watching it and come back with ideas and solutions and approach any of us. I think everyone here is equally in favor of figuring out something. And so I don't think this issue is over, but at least maybe we can study now what happens for at least a short time.
And, and just to support what the mayor's saying, I, I, we wanna be a, a united community. And, but safety is critical. That, that's a priority for us. And so while we figure out how we can be a merged community and Prop 1 is now approved, as I understand it, I don't know if that's gonna help us out or not. But we, we, we've gotta take care of the people that are in our community. And at the same time, I, I am very focused on wanting to develop a, a community across the canal.
So I'll, I'll say this a little bit more about the homeless issue. If you're not aware, there is an overriding Ninth Circuit decision that really affects how government interacts with homeless in the Western United States, anything that's under the Ninth Circuit. And that's called the Boise Decision. And the Boise Decision basically precludes government from doing a lot of stuff. In fact, that issue has been raised now to the Supreme Court and the state of California, the governor and several others have filed amicus briefs in support of overturning that decision. Because we're at a point now, politics aside, the homeless issues have to be figured out and we're not, we're not gaining any ground with it. And so it's pretty interesting to watch people come across the aisle from both sides, really trying to look at this. It's, it's been out of control for a long time. And then there's some hope that the Supreme Court may clarify some of that. But it just, just to those who, who commented on it, just understand, there are a ton of programs out there. The county, the state, there is billions of dollars that are being pumped into this. The problem is, is when you have mental health issues, we cannot legally force people into treatment. And who knows, who knows where this is gonna call, kinda end up, but you're seeing a lot of talk now again about forcing people into stuff. That was stuff we got rid of in the seventies and eighties. And that's being, that's being discussed it again. So it's, it's very complex and it is probably not gonna get easier before it gets harder. And so we have to, we have to really try to take care of our people.
And I don't know that Prop 1 from the state is gonna resolve any of this, but at least it's pumping some money into trying to address some of the mental health issues that are inherent in the, in the homeless population. So we'll see.
All right, moving on to reports of council members. Yes, sir.
All right. First of all, wanna reiterate, thank you mayor for allowing that back and forth. A lot of discussion, but this is the only city where you'll find that because I think we have good people on the dice. Few things I wanted to mention because I don't know if I'll get another chance at this. Cord Street, worst street in our city. I don't know what the pavement schedule is, but if we can possibly move that up to get that repaved. Mountain View, I already mentioned going down, so this is on the west end. Some kind of rail, if we can install. This is anecdotal, but one person said they fell between Juanita Street and Mountain View, because there was nothing protecting them, again, for that accessibility piece. Multiple streets speeding, so Van Louven, obviously an issue. I know I brought this up years ago, we can't install the, the bumps because that would cause safety issues. One thing residents did mention is while there was that speedometer that helped control the speeding, I don't know why we got rid of it. I think we were doing some construction, had it for a while.
Was it the portable one or like a?
I think it was portable, because we got rid of it.
We, she has, we have the portable one. But there's even a lot of places that, have you even seen where they install the permanent ones? Like on a light pole or things like that? I don't know how, how expensive those are.
No, we, we have one at Beaumont Avenue.
Yeah, 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 Beaumont.
Yes, and we have, we have couples. And, and, and that's the reason why we, we keep the Van Louven Street narrow because to reduce the speed.
So again, anecdotal, but Cord Street and Van Louven is where the problem occurs the most, especially where the residents, so after Palm Drive on Van Louven. If we can install that, it sounds like it's a good deterrent, and if it's not expensive, I think that's a win-win for the residents for both streets. That was three, and then fourth one, this is a minor one, so Jansen Village, two things. One, there's a dip and while exiting, you'll notice every single car that goes there has their bumper messed up. So this is on Richardson Street, I believe is the entrance. When you're exiting, there's not enough of a, not enough space for your tires to stabilize the car. So like every single bumper hits when they're exiting.
Yeah, because it's, it's, it's a low spot, because when the Caltrans build that bridge crossing the freeway, it, it generates the, the low spot at that.
About where it floods?
Right.
When you're going inside the mobile homes?
No, he's talking about inside the mobile home park.
Or inside a mobile home.
Not over Richardson.
So on the street itself, so on Redlands Boulevard, when you're going inside the home. So on the street itself, so on Redlands Boulevard, when you're going inside the homes, every single resident in that area had that complaint is that it dips. Now, I don't know if that's an issue that we fix or if it's an issue that Jansen Village would do, but I think it's our street, so it would be. So basically where the sidewalk meets the street is where it needs attention. And then last thing, I think I briefly touched upon it in an email session with you. Commerce within mobile home villages, that was a concern quite a few residents in mobile homes had. I'm sure there's a lot of research that needs to be done, there's probably some ordinances that prevent why you can't have a restaurant inside of a mobile home village. But that was overwhelming feedback that mobile home residents had is that they wanted to do some kind of business. Were unsure exactly why they couldn't, so if we can provide that information and the relevant ordinances.
Which mobile home park is that?
This is Jansen Village.
Which?
Jansen?
Oh, I would probably say it's as simple as saying that's private property, so it's up to the owners.
The owner is the one that was asking, so. If we can just provide the relevant.
It's zoning, it's residential zoning and there's a restaurant right next to it, to the west, so.
Yeah, so they're asking inside and like what they would have to do to change that. Again, I think it's gonna require a little bit of follow-up and research, so I don't need an answer right now, but if, it's something we can provide them and at least alleviate their concerns a little bit. That's it from my end.
Two things. One is I've had several questions about what the heck's going on at Richardson and Redlands with what I think is an ophthalmology clinic? And that's been going on for a long time.
I think they lost a tenant.
So they stopped construction.
Lost the tenant, the ophthalmology tenant? I thought that was the owner.
No, 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 they're just a tenant.
And what about the restaurant that was gonna be on the roof?
Yeah, there was a restaurant too, yeah.
Yeah, no.
They're out too.
Again, that's why they, they're not moving very fast, we would be asked the same thing.
Not moving very fast, I mean, that's, that's the understatement of the year.
I know.
The applicant that came before you, he did reach out to us about a month ago, asking if he can do different uses at the site. So I did let him know what kind of uses are allowed within the C2 general commercial zone. But other than that, we haven't heard back from him, so that's why we suspect he lost his.
If he was smart.
So is it a dead project right now?
I hope not.
Well, I mean.
I think it just slowed down.
If he was smart, he'd build, he'd build a food court for all the hotels. If he was smart, he'd build a food court for the hotels right there.
Yeah.
The zoning would allow it.
The zoning would allow it, yeah, yeah.
But it, but the zoning includes permission for, for a restaurant there, right?
Yes, yes.
Because that was part of the original plan.
Exactly, it was part of the staff report.
Yes.
Okay, so we don't know what's going on there, basically.
Correct.
There's a building going up with a developer. I thought the developer was an ophthalmologist, but evidently none, so we don't know what's gonna happen with that.
No. At this moment, we don't, but we are keeping an eye on it.
Okay, not a satisfactory answer, but I understand it and we don't have control over it, okay. The other is, uh, Mountain View on ramps and off ramps, looking pretty tacky. Are we, do we have a plan to spray weeds and get that all dialed in?
Yes, yes, we have a nice rain and sunshine so as weed grow, so, yes.
Yeah, no.
And we have, we have, we hire a adopted highway company that, that maintains those on ramp and off ramp, so I will.
So sometime in the next.
Yes, I will call and follow up with them, yes.
Okay, good, thank you, that's it.
Okay, I have to say that I was pretty disappointed with this last election. And you know exactly why. And Dr. Daly and I are somewhat embarrassed and I want to apologize because I gotta tell you folks, one of the best council people that we have had here is Bhavan Jindal. And he is honest and he is ethical. And I, he is my friend. And some of the nonsense and stuff that we saw going on in the election was just way below what our city is about.
And we walked the streets for you, right?
So anyway, we'll, we'll see how it all plays out, it's not done yet. But we are, we're definitely gonna have some turnover here and that's a good thing. And I, I'm really hoping and praying that you're here with us next month and we'll, we'll see. So I'm not sure what else to say other than I had to say something about, about that and I appreciate you not going low where other people did.
And I appreciate your support and the community support. Like I said, this is the only city where we're able to have back and forth, we disagree, but we work together. Thank you for not making it a city like some other cities that are neighboring us, where it's not conducive to new people coming in. And that's all because of you two.
Two points, one is I learned today that there's 11 votes between you and your.
Five.
Five now.
It's down to five.
Whoa, okay, hang in there, Bhavan. I had another point and I don't remember it now, so we'll let it go.
Ron and I are gonna push again for some ethics reform and it's, it's really kinda sad because I've been doing a lot of research on, on a lot of that stuff and just what we as a country and what we as people put up with is just not right. And so like, like was said, we all have different opinions and we vote differently and whatever, but we're all, we're all friends and we all get along. And I believe every single person here has, has done what they believe is the right thing in their minds and so, anyway. You'll get there, just five. Reports of officers.
I have two things. We will be doing re-landscaping along the north side of Redlands Boulevard in front of the, the mobile home park. Right now, we have crepe myrtles planted there, but what happened is push the wall on the mobile home site. So that mobile home belonged to Loma University, so we work with the, the managers. They're gonna save those trees, we're gonna relocate those crepe myrtles and plant different trees that provide flowers and, and so.
This is, this is the mobile home park on Redlands Boulevard on the north side of Redlands Boulevard.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, good.
So you will see the, they, they, they will be removing those trees, but they will replant it. Those trees will be relocated to different location.
And, and, and the Tri-Cities Theater that was there, that property, I mean, we've talked about that forever.
They don't wanna do anything with it.
Nothing developed.
No.
It's great property, I mean, we could do so well with that.
So Ron, I don't know if you remember, but there've been several proposals. In fact, there was a, there was a, something on the table a couple of years ago to make that a, like a hockey stadium, right? Like a.
Yeah, Conrad.
Ontario, yeah, the Ontario Rain.
Yeah.
Junior, junior level, yeah, there was a San Diego team that was looking to relocate. But the owners will only lease, they will not sell it.
Yeah, no, I remember that. Because there was all the, also the potential of Costco moving there, right?
Yes.
But same issue, they wouldn't sell, they had to lease.
Second is the, the public budget workshop tomorrow night at six o'clock in the community room. So please, bring in the ideas for the, bringing more revenues to the city and, and reduction, cost reduction. You can think of anything, so, so.
Okay, all right, that concludes our city council agenda, we still have two agendas we gotta knock out, so. Lynette, do you have a preference?
The housing authority?
Okay, let's do it. We're gonna open the housing, the housing authority. Are there any items to be added or deleted here?
No, sir.
Anybody from the public wishing to speak on any non-agendized item can come forward now. Looking and seeing nobody running forward, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the scheduled items, all we have is a consent calendar.
Move the consent calendar.
First and a second.
Bhavan?
Motion is.
You're the only guy that can second it.
He did, he did.
Oh, okay.
Motion is to approve the consent calendar as submitted, please vote. Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you very much, no new business, any reports of members or officers? Seeing none, we're gonna move on and adjourn the housing authority and open up the successor agency. I'll give you a second because I know it takes a minute.
Ready for a motion?
I did have a little technical difficulty, just one moment, I'll be, just a minute.
I'm not sure how our new system worked tonight or not, whether or not it was good. Okay, any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Okay, anybody from the public wishing to speak on any non-agendized item to the successor agency, please run down. Dick, I haven't heard from you all night. You're, you're my advisor, man, you gotta, you gotta tell me. Okay, seeing nothing, we'll go on to the consent calendar.
Move it.
First and a second there.
Motion is to approve, to approve the consent calendar on the successor agency, please vote. Motion carried.
Thank you very much, reports of officers or members, seeing none, we'll adjourn that and we are all the way adjourned.